Good afternoon. The October 24th, 2023 Board Work Session is now in order. Paul, roll call please.
Mr. Susan.
Here.
Ms. Wright.
Here.
Ms. Campbell.
Here.
Ms. Jenkins.
Here.
Mr. Trent.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item in Rule Development is a public hearing on proposed revisions to Board Policy 2520's selection and adoption of instructional materials. Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item?
Okay. Come on down, Ms. Chrisbly. And, yeah, you can, yeah, go ahead. You just do it from up there. Yes, sir. Just, you can, you got three minutes. You can go all of them. Every one of them we bring up, you got another three minutes. I don't, I don't know, but you go ahead.
Good afternoon, Board. Thank you for the opportunity to provide a public comment. Ms. Campbell, in discussion about book banning, you have been talking about how the disagreement between parties on what books to ban is really about the line of what is sexually explicit, explicit and what is not. You are correct. There is a disagreement on where the line is in modern literature. I respect your attempt to clarify this disagreement and maybe move us all toward an area of possible agreement. This is what we should expect of our elected officials, an attempt to have reasonable discussion. In light of your attempt, I will now counter your attempt with my own. The position of the line is only part of our disagreement with book bans. It's not just the position of the line, but what exactly is the line? My own personal opinion is that the line would be something like, like actual pornography or books that actually promote rape or sexual assault, none of which we have in Brevard Schools. Now, let me tell you what the line is not. The line is not books that are sexually explicit and available for teenagers. The line is not books that describe an author's rape or sexual assault or sexual preference and is available to teenagers. The very same teenagers whom, according to CDC, sixty percent of will have actually had sex prior to turning eighteen. And lastly, let's be clear once again that pornography, which has a clear definition, is established by the highest court in this land, is not and never has been in a single book in Brevard Schools. So, let me repeat. It is not just the position of the line that we disagree on, but what exactly is the line? So, we disagree on that. There is another thing we disagree on. And that's something I have a serious issue with, the process. It is one thing to claim to be wanting to keep sexually explicit books out of the hands of students and allowing for a fair, reasoned process to determine if a book should be, should stay or be banned. The reality is you are using policy to manipulate, twist, and deform the process to predetermine the outcome of the process. Removal of experts such as media specialists is a manipulation of the policy. The common excuse given by this board is that media specialists have already reviewed the book and were given their shot. What rubbish. Do the board members even run such rhetoric by others outside of your biased bubble before saying such things? And what bizarre reality is one media specialist responsible for purchasing hundreds of books through an expedited process each spring now suddenly equivalent to a comprehensive and in-depth review of a single book by a committee full of media specialists? That twisting of policy wasn't enough, though, was it? This board then selected the very parents who submitted book challenges to stack the committee as well. And not to be done, you are now going to remove the requirement of reading the book from those making the actual decision. How convenient. Now, Ms. Campbell, you, you don't make all this policy by yourself, so I'm not saying that to you. I can appreciate your position. Thank you.
Shuffle off to Buffalo. Thank you for your time. I would like to make a recommendation referring to a line in Policy 2520. The line that states the school board's decision is final for five years. It needs to be extended. I believe this limited timeframe is an insult to the many people that tirelessly volunteer their time. I'm out of breath. I have a daughter-in-law that's about ready to give, give birth to a baby, and I raised here today for this. That tirelessly volunteer their time to make sure that inappropriate material is taken off of the library shelves. I would imagine that library media specialist, who I'm sure will be employed by BPS well beyond five years, would quickly tire of this process, knowing that every five years, a single book or many books will come up for review again. If a book is inappropriate for our students in 2023, why would that change in five years? Once a book is removed from a shelf, it should be indefinite. I actually cannot believe we are even having these discussions. It should be so simple. Also, it is stated throughout the policy that a parent or resident can file a petition, a parent or resident can submit an objection form, et cetera. But then a resident is excluded from the paragraph, "Parents shall have the right to read passages from any material that is subject to objection." This needs to be included, in, residents need to be included. We are taxpaying citizens who deserve this right. I stand here a proud parent of four awesome adult children that went through the BPS system. If people like me care about this issue, then my goodness, let us have a little respect. In closing, I recently viewed the Florida State Board of Education's October 18th meeting. On the agenda was approval of amendment to Rule 68BVA, "Library and Instructional Materials." This rule amendment is designed to implement House Bill 1069 from the legislative session prescribing the objection form for schools districts to post on their website and updating the criteria for the basis of an objection. The amendment to the rule was unanimously approved. It is stated that the school districts must report objections using the form entitled "Library and Instructional Materials." And I know you guys have all seen this. It's a new form. Effective November 2023. Are we here at BPS ready to align with the Board of Education? I found it interesting that during the BOE meeting, much time was spent on how difficult it is for parents or residents to navigate on their site for proper forms. Navigating on our site is a bit tricky, too. First, we log into brevardschools.org, then you click Department and Programs, then, under the letter C, we click Curriculum and Instruction, then we click the K-12 Library Media, then we click Books Under Review, and unfortunately, there are issues with some of the current status of many of the books. I've seen it. There needs to be a simple ta, okay. I'm gonna say one thing that I'm leaving. Oh, am I good? There needs to be a simple tab on the homepage with easy clicks to all necessary information. The Board of Education is currently working on creating a simple tab on their website that will easily be accessed for the sixty-seven districts. Ben Gibson with the Board of Education said, "It seems there's nothing that would prevent us from just creating a central location where anybody can go." Sometimes forms may be buried intentionally or unintentionally. Anything we can do to make this better is good.
Hey there. So, if I could get everybody's attention, I'm gonna call the letters out really quick, you, quickly for you. Letter, section M. Then number three. Little letter H. And number two. It's if you, it's at the top of page twenty-eight in the attachment, in the redline draft. I think we actually got the wording backward from what our intent was. It says in the parentheses, "A minimum of one week per every hundred pages within the book," or "at an increased pace." I think what we meant, we intended was a minimum of a hundred pages per week. That they could go faster, but if we do a minimum of one week per every hundred pages, it's saying we could go slower, and I don't think that was our intent. So, I don't know. Can that, is that a change that we can make without having to? Okay. So, here's, here's my recommendation, because we need to get this going. I don't think what, the way we have it right now, we've got a committee who's about to go slower, but we want to fix this. So, my, my suggestion, Board, would be for us to move this along in the process because, because it's on schedule for us to vote it into approval on November the fourteenth. That we then go into, back into rulemaking and make that correction, but we don't have to stop the process.
No, it pushes back the whole process. You have to start over. I have to re-advertise. So, fourteen days before the first public hearing and then twenty-eight days before the final approval. So, you're, we don't even have those dates scheduled yet, so I can't even schedule those meetings until after the November fourteenth board meeting where you approve the new calendar.
Right. So, the suggestion would be to move forward the policy as it written, is written because it says, "Or at an increased pace."
Right.
So, we can move faster than that. It's just the way the language is written. It makes it sound like we should only do a hundred pages per week.
Well, is it though? I mean, I, I guess it's subjective because it says a minimum of one week per every hundred pages. So, I think you could interpret that to say the expectation is a hundred pages per one week. That's the minimum standard, or faster. That's...
Right. But a minimum of one week per one hundred pages means it could be two weeks for a hundred pages or three weeks for a hundred pages. So, I think we just, it was, it's backwards.
Yeah. I, I guess it's one of those fun things for interpretation, so. Okay. I say move forward to, and I guess put it on the docket to come back to strike the minimum of, right?
Just rewrite, just rewrite it. We can operate with it the way it is.
Yeah, absolutely.
With how it is, what we could do is the first week, because we're, you know, scheduling the meeting, so the first week would be a hundred pages. Then at that first meeting, it's increased pace based on committee determination. So, at that point, immediately going into the accelerated pages.
Right. I don't think anybody on the committee is gonna wanna slow it down. I know they're eager to get moving on this.
But we do want the policy. We do wanna get it right. So, if we can, you know, approve it hopefully at November fourteenth as is, and then come back and rewrite this part. And we may have new state board rules by then that we have to change anyway. Who knows?
Yeah. I don't think we're done touching this, unfortunately.
Definitely don't wanna pause the process once we get it up and rolling. That was all I had on that one, Mr. Susan. And then same thing in 2521.
Correct.
Yeah. So, to our, to our speaker, when she was talking about the five years, I remember the conversation we had when we brought this up before, that it, it is five years, but it has to go basically in reverse process. It has to go through this process to be put back into the school. So, it isn't something where it can just be reordered immediately.
Right. We're not dumping it back.
Correct. So, media specialists, their process for identifying texts in which to purchase to put into our media centers, they have to look at the exact same four criteria that gets a book out of use. They would be looking at that same criteria to get, to repurchase.
And I think that the thought process behind the five-year difference was that we are representatives of the community that elected us to be here. And so, if we were gonna make it an eight-year term, then in essence, there would be somebody that sits on the board that possibly wouldn't ever get the chance to really touch this policy because our terms are only for four years. So, we were trying to make it, you know, reflective of what the community has elected.
If we're not here, they can change the policy no matter what.
That is true.
It actually works both ways, too, because a book, if a book gets removed for five years, the decision is permanent. If a book gets left in, it's also, that decision is for five years also.
Right. It works both ways. I don't think there's gonna be a perfect time, except for not to do it shorter. But, yeah, I'm fine with leaving it at five.
This policy is one we'll probably have to revisit. I anticipate several times, just based on what's happening, so.
Sounds good. Anybody else on this item? Hearing none. We'll move on to the next item in Rule Development, a public hearing for proposed revisions to Board Policy 2521 Instructional Materials Program. Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Okay. Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Hearing none. Open the floor to discussion. Is there any board member who wishes to discuss this item?
We, because our public commenter mentioned, the, the, was that phrase, "And there are about only parents can read." That's because that's the language of the statute. The only parents are allowed. And I, and, you know, you guys have heard my position on who can read. I, I don't have any desire to widen that, but that's literally the language straight out of statute is for parents. I did, because there was some question that come, came up, I did think it would be a good idea for us, related to this policy, to kind of nail down our consensus on whether or not we're gonna start a second committee. So, I, because I, I heard lots of consensus on moving the process faster, and that's really the only way we can do that, besides the committees choosing to do more than a hundred pages per week. So, I am in favor of getting a second committee started, and I'll get my name to you if the board is, has consensus with that in the next week.
I think it's great point, Ms. Campbell. I think that I, you know, we have thirty-something books that if, even if we did a hundred pages a week, we were looking at. With thirty pages, with, doing a hundred pages a week, even with two groups, it still puts us like a year and a half behind doing it. So, we had spoken before about two, which I think everybody here said they were good with.
No, I, I did not.
What's that?
Not two committees. I wasn't for that.
Oh, you weren't for that?
It's okay.
I was actually gonna push to put more on, but if you guys are not interested in setting three or four.
Smaller government.
I would love to see the one we have get working and get going and then see how well that goes because I do believe that they, because they're allowed to move at a faster pace now, we might see them turn around books in a really quick time. Because I, I mean, I know my committee member had already read several books, and I anticipate probably a lot of the other people on that committee have done the same. So, you know, we, we discussed before that our committee members have taken a lot of backlash from the public attacking them. So, I, I'm a little hesitant to honestly right this moment, just to put another committee together. Let's get this one going and see how fast they get moving and maybe evaluate that. That would be my suggestion, to look at it and see, once they, they get rolling, if we should do it, even put another committee in.
At what time would we have the first type meeting? Are we looking December? If this happens, are we looking January? What are we looking at?
Well, we need to put it out for a public so that they're aware of it. So, I just need the two members to make the full committee. And so, once I have those two names, then we'll be able to go out, you know, that number of days so that we can put it out. I would, you know, with the holidays coming in at the end of Thanksgiving week, we may be able to look at that fourth week.
This won't be approved until mid-December, so.
That's what, that's what I was wondering.
Right. We only have one meeting in November, and we only have one meeting in December.
Oh, yeah. That's right. November's our final.
November fourteenth, we'll have approval. Right.
So, maybe the third week of, because the Thanksgiving, I think, is twenty-second, twenty-third, somewhere in there this year.
Yes. Like, I think the twentieth or something is that first day. So, as soon as we have the full committee, we will call all of them and schedule and then advertise that.
Based upon this thing passing at the right time, you could hit right there in the fourth week of November is what you're saying.
Correct.
Possible. Okay.
Well, it sounds like the only thing that's inhibiting her is you guys getting your new names.
Well, I've already done that, so I don't know.
I don't know where that went. So, it didn't get to you, but I know we submitted.
I did, too. So, I, I'm ready.
If you, yes, if you'll send them to me, then we'll have a complete committee.
I'll give it to you.
And Ms. Harris, can I just ask that you, when you make these phone calls to talk to, to our committee members, maybe just ask them, because we now, once this is passed on November fourteenth, we've opened it up to be able to expedite it and move faster. So, if we were able to give them the books now, to just ask and say, hey, do you think you would possibly have this book ready and read by whatever date that we're shooting for, to try to get it going, you know?
And I agree, since the titles are all on the website, you know, for some of them that know they're on this committee, they may have been pre-reading.
Yeah. Thank you.
Sounds like a plan.
I would recommend that we have a second committee going. This has been paused for like far too long, and, I mean, it's, it's not rocket science. It's, it's simple math. This is gonna take longer than necessary if we only have one committee going. We have plenty of people in this community who are willing to do this, this volunteer position for us. I think we owe it to them, and we owe it to our students and our teachers who are waiting, too. There are some of those books that they're using in their curriculum regularly. They need an answer. So, if we have more than a volunteers to do it, I don't see why we wouldn't be doing it.
So, I think, I think there's good points on both sides. I think right now, we all have, we all have our, our committee members ready. I do, you do. Do you have your first round?
My person is continuing, yeah.
And Ms. Jenkins, do you have your first round, your first person for the committee?
Yeah. We, there was only a team that we have a member.
So, we have, so we have the first round. What I would say is, is it's going to take me probably about thirty days to get another person in, get them ready, talk to them about it, and prep them. So, maybe the come together is, is that Ms. Wright's conversation is correct in that we come forward with the first committee, and then for the first couple of weeks, see how that goes, and then be ready to add the second committee and go. Because it's gonna take me that much time to get to mine anyway. So, I think that that's appropriate. And if that's the direction of the board, we can wait and see. And if they start moving pretty slow, then we add another committee. That's appropriate.
I'm just, I'm just a little confused because there was names given out of people who are gonna be in those positions already, and time has gone by. So, I don't know what's gonna take so long to get to them. I also believe it's the obligation of the book committee to put them in touch of what they're gonna be doing and, and all of that stuff. I don't think that that's our job and our role. I also find it interesting that, like, literally five seconds ago, you said you wanted to have more than two committees, and now we're having one. I, I will say it again. I think it is our obligation to stop stalling this process. We are creating book removals, book pausing, book banning, whatever label you wanna call it, through bureaucracy, and it's not right. We have a committee getting started. We should start them at the same time and get them moving, get them going, get it done. Because quite frankly, the faster we can get through these lists of books, the faster we can stop talking about it at our board meetings, and it will stop consuming the progress and the work that we can be doing here. It is our obligation to do that. Otherwise, we're gonna be having this conversation for another year and a half, two years, talking about the same titles of books. It's crazy.
Is anybody here, just out of point of reference, stalling this thing? Are we all pretty much?
No, not intentionally stalling it whatsoever. And, and Ms. Jenkins, in all fairness, just to respond to what you're saying, I I hear what you're saying, that we want to have additional committees going and these books processed. But in all due respect, the wife of your committee member is the one who's been actively attacking the other members all over the internet. And so with that being said, I'm a little hesitant to put another one of my friends on the chopping block to get up there and be, you know, their business, their, their broker. I mean, it's been ridiculous just last week even. And so to me, let's run with the committee we have. Let's see where it gets. If they can move it faster, great. But until we can have some, you know, people that are just, you know, hey, focus on what you're doing here, and get that done instead of attacking individuals and their livelihood, I, I'm not in favor of putting somebody else out there right now.
Ms. Wright, I hear you, and, and no one is saying that that's an appropriate way to treat somebody. And I'm pretty sure you know who you're speaking to. I know what it feels like to be attacked by community members. So I don't need to hear that. Don't even go there, Mr. Susan. Don't even go there. It's not a competition. But my point is, to say that and to place that on me is ridiculous. And the committee member themselves are our responsibility. I am not responsible for other people in the community, as you are not responsible for other people in the community. And if a person doesn't want to longer sit on that committee, then they don't have to. It's a voluntary position. They don't have to.
Well, that's the goal. I know. So let's just go with what we have.
So if I can bring us back to make sure, because I want to make sure that what we're communicating to Dr. Rendell is clear. So there's, sounds like there's two people who definitely are ready to get the second committee going. One who does not want a second committee at all, one who wants to wait. And Mr. Susan, you sound like you're getting ready for your second committee person.
Ms. Campbell, I can explain.
So I, so I, so can we get there to, because I want to make sure what we're saying to Dr. Rendell is clear.
I can sum it all up. We were having a conversation earlier. Are we good?
Yep.
With establishing the fact that we're not stalling. Okay. The bottom line is, is that we should move forward. I'll get a second person ready in the event that they don't end up moving. But it's going to take like 30 days for me to get that person, talk to them. They're going to have to go back to their spouses. It's Thanksgiving. It's a bunch of stuff. So let's move forward with one committee for now. Let's see how they look. And then try to schedule that meeting for the end of November so that we can get moving. And then hopefully, I like the idea of letting them know, here's the books, here's where you can find them and stuff like that. I think if we're going to host a meeting, a committee meeting, to allow people to come to read and run through that, that they should be as prepared as possible, and I think that's on us. So if you can do that, so I think that that's good. And then in the event, in December, if we see that it's taking extra time, then we can open it up for a second committee. And by then, we should all have an idea of who we would like to move forward. So I think that that sums it up.
So we need to go ahead and have the second name prepared.
In the event that we don't, but you don't have to do it until the middle of December. And then we have a whole other conversation on whether they're going fast or going slow and everything.
Okay.
So my next steps will be, I will communicate if, if I can get the two committee, I think the, I don't have those names. So if you'll just send them to me, I will contact them, get them ready for that first book, well, schedule that first meeting, and then we'll await directive moving forward on a second committee.
And I'll give it to you right as soon as our meeting's over. I'll bring it over to you.
Okay.
Okay. Does anybody else wishes to speak to this item? Anybody else wishes to speak to this item? All right. Here we go. Next is the proposed attendance boundary changes proposals for school year 2024, 2025. There she comes.
Yeah, so Karen Black is going to speak to this item.
Thank you, Ms. Black.
Hello. Thank you for letting me have a few minutes on the agenda. We just have one small attendance boundary proposal for 2425 school year. It's Mila to Lewis Carroll Elementary. The reason for the change is to be proactive before any homes are built. It's a new subdivision that came in for preliminary review, potential of 90 units. It would generate approximately 10 elementary school students. But the aim of the attendance boundary change is to move the attendance boundary line so that all of the units would be in the same school zone. The boundary goes down the middle. So we all spoke with transportation, and either school would require busing. It's two and a half miles to Mila, so they're outside the walking distance. And it's a half a mile, less than a half mile to Lewis Carroll. There's a crossing hazard with Courtney Parkway, so they would be riding a bus anyway. So we believe that the best solution would be the closest school, which is Lewis Carroll.
And just for, I just want to just clarify this publicly, that there are currently no students there. This is for a new subdivision. So this will not impact anyone who currently is enrolled in schools.
No students will be affected.
Okay, just want to make that very clear, because anytime we say boundary change, that's what comes in as concerns.
We're trying to be proactive and change it before any homes are built.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions on the proposed boundary change? All right. Any other discussion that you want to have on any other item? You got the floor.
No, I don't believe so. I just would like your permission to move forward with the attendance boundary change process.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
So the next step will be, we'll bring it to the board in November for information.
Thank you. Thank you very much for all of your service. Next is a presentation on student achievement and curriculum updated by Ms. Harris, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. Ms. Harris.
So thank you to our board chair and board members for letting me give a little update around our curriculum and instruction updates. We will be going into some data, but right now, as you're aware, we have very limited data. But we're expecting to, now that cut scores have been approved on October 18th, that we'll be moving forward, and the release of some data such as linking scores will come out, and we'll be able to share more at that time. What I do have to share with you, I have our PM1 data, and I want us to compare our PM1 data for this school year 2023 with our PM1 data from last year. So one thing I want to draw your attention to is in the K2, this is very adaptive because it's in those foundational skills. So it is adaptive, but for the most part, this is saying, where are students with the 40th percentile ranking? Because that has been the indicator that shows if a student comes into that grade level and scores at the 40th percentile ranking, they are likely to be on grade level by the end of the year. So if you see our incoming kindergarteners, 54% of them have hit that 40th percentile. If you're looking at our first graders, 52% of them. And then again, looking at our second graders, 54. So a trend you will see is our students are coming in lower with less acquisition of the skills needed from day one than they were last year. This next slide, it goes to the FAST data for three on up. And so something that is different from the K2 data is what you will see here is again, our comparison of both BAVARD this year, again, entry to entry last year. But something that is different about this test than that K2 test is this is on grade level. So that's important for our stakeholders to understand, because sometimes we'll have parents call and say, my child has always excelled in school, but at PM1, their score was low. And we affirm that, yes, that is a number they're not used to seeing. But with this new assessment, being that it's only in its second year, that is saying, what does your child already know of the current grade level? And so that's very different, because you could be a high-performing student, but not yet know everything of the fifth grade yet. And so just being able to communicate that, because it's very different than our old state assessment system.
So Ms. Harris, if I could interrupt real quick. To put that in layman's terms, PM1, you're tested on the full-year data. So you're taking a test at the beginning of the year that is asking you if you have the knowledge and skills for the whole year yet. So a lot of times with this new method, it's only our second year the state has utilized this method. A lot of our students are used to seeing, you know, 80, 90% proficient. They're seeing 30, 40% proficient. They're like, oh, my gosh. That's because they shouldn't necessarily know all the material for the whole year yet. You know, this is to see what they do know at the beginning of the year, so what we, teachers need to concentrate on as they go through the rest of the year. Also, just to orient you to the graph, this is kind of the way the state does it, is the newest year is on the left. So 23 is on the left and 22 is on the right, when you look at the bars. Takes me a while to see that.
Yeah, it's flipped from what you used to use.
It is. Any questions on those data points thus far? So this is where, again, now we're going to look at our math data. And so again, you will see the incoming on the left compared to the previous year. And you will see especially, you know, when we look around our third grade, they are still coming in with, you know, higher than last year, but they still have a lot of room to grow in the area of math. What we want to have in our conversations now with teachers is we're looking at how much growth did our students make last year? And so we know if students are coming in with greater deficits than they came in last year, that we know if we, if we want to change that outcome number in the end, we need more growth than we did last year. So we're having discussions around how do we get additional growth? Another area of student achievement data that I want to bring attention to, because this is the first year that the state has identified beyond comprehensive support. So you're very familiar with our schools that have been involved with comprehensive support. Typically, those were schools earning a school grade of D or F. So we knew this was coming, and this is the year that it is here. So in front of you, you have some documents that identify the classification of where schools are. So under CSI, in our traditional schools, you will see our two school grades that earned school grades of D, Creel and Endeavor. But you will also find Oak Park on that list. And they fall into this category because they had overall federal index below 41. And so that is something new. They did receive $75,000 of state funding due to that classification. So it's not that we want the money, we'd rather not earn the money because we're not having that overall federal index issue. But those schools, you will also see Gardendale is on that list, and that is due to their overall federal index. So those schools earn UNISIC funding, which is a school improvement grant from the DOE. Endeavor and Creel, a more significant amount, and those other two schools earn $75,000. The next category you will see moving on up is our targeted support. And so you will see we have two traditional middle schools on that list and one middle charter. And this is for having one subgroup that has been below 32% for three consecutive years. So we're working with those schools through the school improvement process, because of course, we, we know that if we can strengthen learning for all students, all of our subgroups will come up. But we know that a federal index of 32%, that data point is built on the average of all pieces of school grade. So at the middle school, all the cells in which earn a school grade, they take the average for each subgroup, and that determines that federal index. This third category, you will see several of our schools on this list. And this, so you will see a number, and that number that is under the subgroup, that represents their federal index for that subgroup. The number you will see in the parentheses, that is the number of years that that subgroup has been below 41. So I can tell you from a school improvement lens, we are looking at obviously getting that federal index up. But more significantly, if this has been a two-year, three-year issue for this subgroup, we're looking at how do we attack that? How do we get around that? Because the more years, obviously, you see you can get to TSI status, and we're trying to get our schools off of this list. But this is a new lens in which we're looking. Because you will see, we do have schools that, if we look at just school grade, they would not be on our radar. But we want to ensure that all students are learning, and the subgroup data points really point out this issue. The website I have at the bottom, if you are to click through that, you can look up by school. You click on the school grade, and once you do, you can look at this data by every subgroup, and it will show you what the school grade would be based on just that subgroup. So that website is very informational when you're starting to really dive into the subgroup data. Any questions on that information?
I think I know the answer to this, but the parentheses numbers, three is the biggest, because that's how many years they've been doing this, right? So the most anything would be is three. Okay, thank you.
And something else I will tell you, you will see some schools where they had one subgroup for one year. That is a school, of course, through their school improvement process, we're supporting. But this is lagging data from 2022, so we're very hopeful when new subgroup data comes out, that some of those one-year, one-subgroup, maybe it was the number of students. Because remembering, you need 10 students to equate to a subgroup. Some of our schools have all the subgroups. Some of them have very few subgroups, but some of them have only, say you have 12 students in a subgroup. And so if to withdraw, you could potentially not have that subgroup anymore. So really diving into who are the students within that subgroup. So we're getting ready to get informational school grades. So these would be school grades for school year 2223. Some things I want to highlight, first of all, the state has said that we should expect them in winter, but I've heard everything from November, December, or January. So any day now, we could get informational school grades. But I, I want to draw your attention, because when these are released, they will not come with sanctions. So regardless of the school grade, people would not move into a turnaround status or receive other state sanctions due to school grade. And that is because there are not learning gains calculated into this. So what I want us to be very clear on is for schools that have been underperforming in the past, without those learning gains, because maybe the majority of their students haven't met with proficiency yet, but they're making that annual learning gain, so they're getting points. Once we take those away, all we have are the proficiency. So I do expect that some of our schools will receive school grades that we are not accustomed to. The other news, when we're talking about school grades, is for 2324, that would be our very first school grade that we will get from our data in the spring, that PM3 data in '24. That will be our first school grade with the FAST data. Something else I want to bring your attention to that was written into statute this year is for elementary schools. This will be the first year that third-grade ELA proficiency is its own category in school grade. So we've been talking a lot about the need to support that early childhood education piece. This year, we will be held accountable for that third-grade ELA performance for the first time. Any questions on school grade?
If we had a school in turnaround, then they're also not coming out, correct?
Fortunately for BAVARD right now, our D schools are single Ds, and so those are not considered turnaround.
So we don't have any?
Correct. So we don't have any. What the state has done in the past for, if you are in true turnaround, and say your informational grade comes out of C, they have allowed you to come out of turnaround status based on that, even though it's an informational grade. However, our D schools are single Ds, so they're not in turnaround. We want to keep them out of that. So now I'm sure you're wondering, based on all of that information and data, what are we doing about this? And so I can tell you, we've had our district data teams meet. We meet again, I believe, November 6th, where several departments were coming together, were looking at that data to really look at school supports. So we give a lot of allocations, we have programs that we push out to schools based on need, and then actual district personnel that go out and directly support those schools. So we're having conversation to make sure that we're sending those supports to the correct schools. Really doing an audit of where are we spending our time and our money and our materials to make sure that they are supporting and that we're getting a return on investment with all three of those pieces, the allocations, the programs, and where we're spending our time with personnel. We hope to be able to identify practices and name them, so that we can then replicate them at other schools. Because we have some schools really moving the needle with not only subgroups, but overall achievement, and we want to replicate that in other settings. And I give the example of, I've worked with some really rock star teachers, and I say, you know, teacher, tell me, how are you getting this data? Your, your students are, you know, learning gains, it's going great. I just do what I do. So we want to, you know, analyze those practices so that we can replicate them, name them so that we can move them to other sites. So this brings us to kind of the evaluation that we've done in my division. It's really looking at if we're trying to peel back the needle, because some of the subgroup data is not new for BAVARD. We've talked about it year after year. And so really looking at peeling that onion to figure out the why. So we use this problem solving to look at, is it an instructional issue? And that would be how we're delivering instruction. Is it a curriculum issue? That would be the what. What are the materials? The environment, what does that classroom setting look like? The environment, what does that classroom setting look like for students? And then that last one is the learner. And what we really try to aim is to the top. We look at the instruction, curriculum, and environment. When those are all ideal and as expected, then we start diving into the learner. So we don't go to the learner until we make sure that the top three are in alignment with best practices. What I can tell you, with the board's support, we have been able to purchase high-quality aligned materials. So curriculum is not our issue. All of our schools, to include our non-Titel One schools, which don't always have that funding that we're able to provide, we're able to purchase some materials through grants so that everyone has some high-quality instructional intervention materials in addition to those core materials. So we really want to dive into that instruction piece. We want to make sure that our teachers are armed with the strategies to deliver that high-quality curriculum. An aligned program in a box that a teacher is not comfortable delivering does us no good for students. And so we want to invest in our teachers. They come and serve us every single day. We want to make sure that they have the strategies to deliver that curriculum as intended to get the outcome. The link at the bottom of this page is all of our curriculum. So if you want to dive into the resources that we are using, you can find them on that link. So our theory of action is if we engage in intentional professional learning to build our teaching force, then we will have improved research-based, evidence-based practices going on in our classrooms. And then the outcome would be we're having increased outcomes for students. So that leads us to some grants that we've been able to write to support our teachers. Keeping in mind that many of our teachers are new to the profession, perhaps did not go through the College of Ed. And so that science of reading instruction that was written into statutory language this year, we know that that is just good practice. So statute or not, that is good practice to teach reading instruction. So we have this grant that was targeted by the requirements of the grant for particular schools. But we have these teachers coming in. They're coming in on Saturdays, they're coming in on the evenings. And it's the best feedback we've gotten since ever. Like, it's the first time we've had principals call and say, I would have sent more people. When's the next meeting? I'm sending more. So we're very pleased on this. And I have to do a shout-out to the elementary programs and the early childhood resource teachers because they are kicking this off for our teachers. So like I said, it's a two-year program. We want to do a deep dive. And so you see, we have weekends, we have evenings, and we have online opportunities. So this will go for the next two years. One of the things you'll note is we're doing this with the twenty schools identified meeting the criteria of that grant. Well, we have a lot more elementary schools than that. And so we are currently writing some other grant opportunities so that we can replicate this so all students or all teachers have this opportunity. I can tell you right now, being submitted to the state is some professional learning for all third-grade teachers in Brevard. Because we know that that is the game changer, that is the gatekeeper from moving from learning to read to read to learn. And so we know the importance of third grade. We also are building in, we know teachers, you know, they're working hard all day long. They don't always have, you know, we want them to go home and spend time with their families. So we're building other types of early childhood around that science of reading. Thirty minutes, I can log on, get my learning, bite-sized chunks. I can implement it tomorrow. So we build these modules that they can go on at their leisure. Some are live, but then we record all of them. And so we're really trying to build our understanding of the workload that teachers have, but balancing it with the need to always be continually improving in our practices for an on-demand professional learning opportunity. Again, we know it's going to take a village to change the outcome of that K three-three. I think you remember Dr. Bias last week, looking at discipline data and really talking about how, once students are not meeting with success with their academics, sometimes they start to make distractor choices to get them out of that learning setting. So we know we have to have everybody on our elementary campuses on board with this initiative. We are working with our assistant principals. So they're very clear on that three-Qing legislation, what it is and what it's not, so that they can monitor instruction and serve as that instructional leader to emphasize this in their K three classrooms. Again, we are pushing in, providing support with supporting teachers in the how they're delivering the content. For the, you know, it wasn't always the case where I could say every school had high-quality materials. But we are there today, so we want to focus on the how, the instructional delivery. This is just a summary, and I know you have it in front of you, of things that we are trying to do to emphasize the importance of literacy. We need our third graders leaving third grade on grade-level readers. We know that there is a lot of research that says, when they are not on grade level in third grade, how that can impact the trajectory for their next steps. So you will see, these are things that we have in place. The link at the bottom is our support for parents. So when they click on there, there are supports for assisting their children at home because we know that parents are the first teachers, but they're also there with the evening, and they can guide us in this work. I would be remiss if I didn't talk about math because I just want you to know, we have acknowledged that we have focused on reading for several years. But now with this new legislation around identifying students with deficiencies in math, we have a clear issue that we want to overcome when we think of elementary math. We have, through the support of ESAR, we had eight instructional coaches. So they were out on, they were not in this building, they were out in school. So they had a caseload of five or six schools. They spent last year, and then this year would be the final year with them, really supporting teachers in that delivery. Because remember, we adopted new standards two years ago. So for elementary teachers, they teach, most of them teach all the content areas. There's been a whole lot of new for them. On this site below, you will see we also designed an at-home math. And that has been, I will say, every time I'm on there, I'm looking at how many hits it's getting. We have videos so parents can see what it looks like. So they can click on first grade, they can go to the unit that their child is working in, and they can see videos of how to practice at home. In secondary, it looks a little different. We have our content specialists working directly with the principal supervisor directors doing those school walks. Our principal directors call and say, hey, I was at this school today, and the ELA team really needs your support. And so we have staff that can go out and really do the planning in a PLC module for those settings. Some exciting things for math because we're really trying to tackle that eighth-grade math. And then also really looking at our algebra. Contacting other people that are outperforming us, just being very transparent of, we want to learn of what are the best practices that can move the needle for Brevard. One of the things that we want to put in place is that second bullet, the Bridge to Success Initiative. And this would really be an online self-paced opportunity for students that are in sixth grade. If they're, if they've been identified as possible candidates for seventh-grade algebra, we want them to have this bridge to success. And that is basically the pre-algebra standards that they would work through in order to sit into that class. We want to make sure that if students are being placed in a seventh-grade algebra, which is a high school course as a seventh grader, that they are armed with all the tools to maximize their potential in that course. So we're very excited to roll that out for next summer. And then these are just our next steps. Early childhood, early childhood, early childhood. We have, that is the key to success. Our kindergartners do not come in five years below grade level. We have, the gap is small in kindergarten. I will tell you, in Brevard, the gap begins to widen at the end of first grade. So our students come into first grade with not a significant gap. They are leaving first grade with a gap. And so we are attacking that first grade so that we can get that third grade up. And so we know that this will take time. But we, we know that we can do, if we do this well for K three, Brevard can stop talking about the subgroup issues. We will have provided a quality instruction for those students at the foundation. So hopefully, the behaviors are reducing, they're reading on grade level, and we meet with success. The elementary math, that is that piece that I've shared. We continue to wrap, and again, it was statutorily driven a lot around reading for all these years. This is our first year having math statutory language. And so really trying to prioritize that to close some of the gaps you see in our math data. And then, as I mentioned earlier, just our algebra. We want to make sure that regardless of when a child takes algebra, they are armed with success and that they're still getting that high-quality instruction around algebra. Any questions?
Any board members wish to have any questions?
So I love all of this. I just, I have one specific question. So when you were talking about the grants that we're applying, or the grants, sorry, if it's not an S at the end, that we're applying for to help supplement those schools that are not identified as RACE schools. Is there a reason why it's specifically third grade? It's like, is that what the grant's for, or are we choosing third grade?
We are choosing third grade, again, full transparency. We're hitting a lot of teachers through that K two. And through the hits, where it's those twenty schools, we're also in the process of putting through an amendment on that grant because we wrote it for four hundred teachers. And four hundred did not, have not yet come. And so we have some additional funding. So we're going to expand beyond those twenty schools for that K two piece. So we're going to be able to expand that with this amendment. And so we targeted third grade, just knowing this is our first year with that being a sell of school grade. So that was kind of our thinking, is we're going to expand some of the K two work through that other grants amendment. And so with this new grant, we thought, well, this is our time to try and support our third-grade teachers as much as possible in their very first year, counting as their own sell for school grade.
Awesome. Thanks. Yeah, I, that makes complete sense to me now. I just know, like, working, and I'm not an expert in this area because I wasn't a classroom teacher, but I obviously was in and out of our, of our little ones with speech and language difficulties. But I always was told by the teachers that second grade is almost like a repeat of first grade. It gives them that time to catch up. So to me, I'm like, you know, I feel like that's a really a priority here for our teachers to get this. So that makes complete sense to me now.
And here's what I can tell you is, so often in second grade, we start asking students to make meaning of text, and we're going right to that comprehension when they cannot decode the words. And there is not a comprehension strategy that overcomes a child that cannot sound out the words.
Right.
So we're really trying to have a focus on that area. And I've spent a lot of my career working in turnaround. And I just know that is your biggest bang for your buck.
Yeah, thanks. Appreciate it.
First of all, thank you for all the professional development and the flexibility in the training because you were talking about the thirty-minute mini-modules. I mean, that's, you know, I know a lot of times when I have to listen to something, I'm cooking supper while it's going, and I stop and pause and rewind that, whatever, because that's the life that we live. So I very much appreciate the flexibility so that teachers can get that professional development on demand because that is also the life that we live now, right, on demand. These, these sites for the parents to access, how is that information going out so that parents know that resource is available to them?
So we, when we met with principals and assistant principals in July, we emphasized these sites. And we were very clear on saying, you know, our teachers that work back in Pod Three work on the teacher contract schedule as well. And so we were literally building them, like, each week was adding the fault, the next unit. So we asked them to push them out on their social medias. Where you can find them on our website is if you go under Parents and Students on the main page. You should see them there. If you go under Curriculum Instruction, you can find them there. But we want them to be as, we, not more than two clicks. So we want them, what we, what I can tell you is, they're not getting the exposure that we want yet. And so we continue to bring them up, and we continue to, you know, share at parent nights and put out on your social media because I think once parents see that they're there, they will be a tool. But until they, you know, it's just like everything else. We put it out on a lot of ways, but there is still, we're still missing a population.
Right. No, I appreciate it. And let's, let's keep, keep doing it, keep up the good work with that. Obviously, with these instructional coaches, funding through ESAR, we, I guess, with the end of this school year, we'll have to decide, is that something then that if we're going to continue, the board will have to find the funding to continue to do that? It's probably a little early to make that recommendation. But I mean, are we, that's, you spoke right now as if that's going away with the end of the funding.
Well, and I can tell you, because it was a two-year funding, we, some people have, did not come into the second year, and we did not replace those positions. So we had eight allocations, but even already, so that we can reallocate that funding. So we are down to six, getting ready to be down to five. Just, and to your point, we do want to look at return on investment. So we are looking at the impact they're having. I can tell you right now, they have five or six schools. In talking with principals, they're like, I want them more. Well, everybody wants their own, you know, if money wasn't an issue. So we do want to look at return on investment and some possible other funding sources. But we want to make sure that this model is the best before I could advocate for continuing.
I appreciate that very much. There was one other thing I was going to ask you. Oh, the Bridge to Success Initiative. So this, you know, it's funny because actually, just in the last few years, I've heard more and more parents who are upset because their child was put in Algebra I, and they felt maybe too early. And I know, because I've been on the board, we've, we've had the initiative to push eighth graders, right? We want to get eighth graders, if at all possible, everyone to take Algebra I in eighth grade because the numbers, the success is just greater. But that seventh grade in Algebra I is tricky for some. And I actually just talked to a parent sometime in the last week who their child got out of Algebra I now. Here we are, like, two months into the, a quarter, whole, full quarter into the semester, and they're moving back into, like, a seventh-grade math. So this is crucial. I don't know if it's just a new thing, or I just hadn't heard it before the last couple of years. But is this, is this, this is just for sixth graders? I mean, how are we going to communicate that? Is it going to be any kind of requirement? Like, hey, we're, we're going to pitch an Algebra I next year, but you really need to do this over the summer?
I've had a lot of conversation with Dr. Rendell about this. And the reason that we kind of looked at those sixth grades rising to seventh grade is our sixth-grade math data is phenomenal. Like, we have hung our hat on that sixth-grade math data. The issue is, is we, because we have sixth grade in the elementary, we do the typical sixth-grade MJ course. We don't offer the sixth-grade MJ advanced because our sixth-grade teachers would then have to carry that math certification. And so we, what we try to do as a workaround is embed those pre-algebra standards from that MJ course into our pacing guide. The issue is, is sometimes teacher buy-in is, I'm being tested on these standards. I need my students to master these standards. They're not being tested on these standards, and I don't want to take away the time on these standards to address these. So the nature of the beast is they really focus and do really well on those sixth-grade MJ. But it doesn't prep them for that seventh-grade algebra because those pre-algebra standards, they've not had time to grapple with that content. And so this would be initially, we're going to do two things. Make sure we are tight with identifying students that we're saying for that seventh-grade algebra. That should, that's typically not a lot of students. And I wonder if sometimes we're saying, okay, you scored level five since third grade in math. You're a perfect candidate for this. That's not the indicator because those level fives have not been on pre-algebra. And so using some screening tools, working with John Carr on some possibilities of looking at some screening. And so then with bridging this, right now, we're, it's very early phases. Like, this is just very initial. So I can't say that it's going to be like, you must. But what I, you know, Dr. Rendell was proposing is that we say, okay, we need you to complete this in order to sit for that seventh grade. Because we just want parents informed. We want them to, if your child's going to take this course, you need to know it's on content. They're going to be expected to come in with some standard knowledge that they have not yet been exposed to. Other districts have been doing this, so we're working with them to figure out what works best for Brevard. But it's just an innovative way, not to say we couldn't use it later with seventh graders going into that eighth grade. So they're taking that pre-algebra in seventh grade. But for students that need additional support, this could be an avenue that they could take in order to become stronger students for that eighth-grade algebra.
Well, I think it's a fantastic idea and it'd really be helpful to support those, the kids that are going into that and maybe are ready. Because I know a lot of times it happens is, you know, they do the end-of-the-year testing, and then, okay, from now to the end of the year, we're going to do those pre-algebra standards because now, you know, FAST or FSA, whatever, is over. So I appreciate the thought put in into that, and I hope that we can find some success.
Well, just to kind of give them some behind the scenes, you know, our job is to put our kids in a position to be successful. And everybody wants to accelerate. And everybody thinks acceleration is the way to go, like, always. And we have students who are exhibiting some strong math skills in elementary schools. Like, oh, well, if they're level five in sixth grade, they must be ready for algebra. But the sixth-grade math content doesn't contain any pre-algebra work unless you add it in. And so those kids, we're actually doing them a disservice by putting them in algebra if they're not ready. So we're going to have to have a conversation, a lot of times with parents who are like, well, I want my son or daughter accelerated because I want them to be able to take pre-calculus in tenth grade. And, you know, they want to get going. And that may not be the best course for them. You know, really, seventh-grade algebra is, should be rare. You should be really, really strong in math and already have maybe been exposed to some of those concepts. And so this Bridge to Success course requirement over the summer And so this Bridge to Success course requirement over the summer, participation in or whatever, would be something that introduces them to algebra concepts, they can see how they do over the summer. If they don't actually do very well on that, then they might rethink taking algebra in seventh grade, you know?
And it's online, it's an online course.
Yes, correct.
Yep. And it's just one of the things that we've been talking to other districts that they do, you know, that if you put a kid in seventh grade math, you want them to be successful. And so if they, they do a screener or they do something to either make sure they're ready, you know, before they do. So we're, you know, we're going to do something like that.
Yeah, and I know that, I know the middle schools get acceleration points for having students, but I mean, it's just not at the, at the, you know, it's, it's not helpful if we have a student who's very frustrated and, and not finding success.
Well, and again, it's a high school credit, so you're going to start your seventh grade career off of a high school credit. And if you're, if you're looking to be an AB student and you get a C in that Algebra I class because you really weren't ready, that's going to hurt your GPA.
Yeah, I appreciate that, that's all.
Well, I just want to reiterate what I'm hearing is, I mean, this is some of the reason I'm sitting in this seat, is because I've taught the pre-algebra and the algebra, and I've seen the seventh graders who were just amazed they were not successful, is because they did see that, they had that gap, you know, because my first question from, you know, coming into Brevard is, well, when did you take pre-algebra? And they said, I didn't. So that's where I started looking into, and I saw we needed to do something. So I'm very happy about what I'm hearing. It's, it's nice to hear that we have a plan. And it's, I'll go back even a little bit more. It makes us, I'm sure it's going to make us feel very comfortable up here to hear you say that our schools have what they need to be successful, Ms. Harris. So that's, we, you know, that, our job well done here at the board and, and the district to get you that, because I, I've heard for many years that they just didn't have it. So that's, I'm very excited to hear that. And I've delayed enough that our chair is back. So, no, yeah, honestly, that was it. I'm very happy that we're, we're going to get those kids prepared and, you know, put in a position of success, and that's our job. So I appreciate you addressing that.
No, I, I'm excited about this. I just want to, real fast, a couple of things. I, you know, I'm a little nervous and I kind of hear your hesitancy on what it's going to look like when these school grades come back. So if you will do me a favor just to email us and let us know, right, when it hits, because I'm sure you're going to be informed before necessarily we might be informed?
Yeah.
Just so we're prepared there. I'm excited about all of this, honestly, the K through third grade, just really attacking there, because I do believe, honestly, that gap, like you said, just gets further and further and further as they go. I'm going to brag real fast on a best model teacher to maybe look at when we're talking about this algebra component, Mr. Maggie at Challenger 7. So he taught my daughter, and my daughter is now, she's in seventh grade, and she's in Algebra I honors with 100% in the first quarter and 110%. I don't even know how you get that. I'm like, okay, they're given extra credit, obviously. But, so he's a, a model teacher you might want to look at, because he's done a phenomenal job. And I've heard from many parents that he sets those kids up for success when they go into algebra in the middle school. So that's a teacher that I would just like to give a shout to and say, hey, look at him, he's doing a really good job.
Interesting you say that, because I just prior to here had a meeting with Heather, our secondary content specialist for math, and I said, we need to identify the rock stars. So we have one more to do.
I got one. All right, so yeah, good stuff. So I'm looking forward to it. It looks like you got the roadmap laid out pretty good here on how we're going to attack some of these issues that we've identified. I'm excited to see the positive change continue to keep on moving, so good job, job well done.
I wanted to say, thank you, Ms. Harris, for putting this together. One of the things that I wanted to bring up to the board is, is that we went through COVID, right, which completely changed the way that we were delivering our education to our students. Then we come out of that, and then after COVID, we ended up with mental health and the discipline issues and all the other components that go along with that. And I think for the first time, we're now in a year where a lot of that's behind us. We've course corrected. Our teachers now can literally sit down and start having those conversations and really driving into the not having some of those problems that have been carrying over. So I'm just so excited to see this. I'm excited to see a lot of the components as far as focusing in on where we talked about with the K through three education and pre-K and stuff like that. I, I just wanted to say thank you, and I think we're ready to roll, so with that.
So I'm just going to jump in real quick. I want to thank Mrs. Harris and her team for not just the presentation, but for all that they're doing. I had promised you guys that we were going to look at PM1 data. Like I had said a while back, that, hey, when we get to PM1 results, we're going to look at, you know, PM1 this year versus PM1 last year to see how we're doing. That's really all I asked her to do today, was just give us a snapshot of PM1 and PM, PM1 this year versus PM1 last year, how we were doing. And she said, well, I got to show them all this other stuff that we're doing to address, you know, any of our shortcomings and all this stuff that everybody's working hard on. So you'll notice, like, it was only three slides were on PM1 and data, and then everything else was like, all this stuff we're doing, because they wanted you guys to know all this stuff we're doing. And so I appreciate all the hard work, not just in the presentation, but that everybody's doing.
We, we have a great team, and I would, I couldn't stand here if it weren't for them. So they deserve the credit.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. All right, moving on. The next topic of discussion is to designate the dates, times, and locations of the school board meetings. I noticed in there that we now have an, almost an entire month between June and July where we can take those vacations. Is everybody okay with the current statute, or is there something else you guys would like to change? Uh-oh, here we go.
I think considering that we Turn off my microphone. Considering we, we removed that first meeting in July, if we can just update, at the bottom, it talks about work sessions happening at 2:00. The second sentence says work sessions in June and the first one in July will be beginning at 10:30. Can we just scratch that part about July?
Yeah, we can correct that, yep.
Yeah, yeah, just because we won't have that first one in July. Thanks. No, thank you for making the changes.
I, I have one thing, and I just, and I'm just throwing this out here because this was kind of brought up to me, and I thought, I never thought about that. So statutorily, we are required to have one school board meeting a month. I know a lot of districts around the state that only have one school board meeting a month. I'm not suggesting that we do that, because we have a lot to do. But, I, I had a couple more. No, no, we did that, remember? I think in the month of December, we had some kind of record-setting amount of school board meetings. But one thing that was brought up to me was, hey, some parents work during the night hours, they don't work a nine to five. And so like, we can't come to an evening school board meeting, even though we want to express to you guys what's going on. On the months that we have two meetings, is there any, I guess I want to hear the board's consensus, would it be something that we would entertain to maybe have one daytime meeting and one nighttime meeting? That way we kind of are able to appease both sides of this for parents that don't work a typical nine to five job. I don't know what the thoughts are on the board, but that was something that was brought up to me, and I thought, well, I don't know, I'll ask and see what they say, so.
Any discussion on that?
Yeah, I, I would just say, I feel like traditionally, when we have morning meetings, we typically have less participation than we do in an evening one. It's kind of hard to appease everybody. And the other downfall of that is if we have morning meetings, we're taking staff away from their daytime jobs to be here during those meetings. So, I mean, really, it would be what would be most functional for Dr. Rendell and the staff, too. Not just, not just us.
Ms. Campbell?
I thought we just did morning meetings for the air conditioning. No, I'm just kidding. I love our, I do love our summer morning meetings. And actually, I think, sorry, my brain just went, and then it went right back out. Oh, I, I appreciate that you bring up that about people working, because a lot of times we, we get every year some flack from somebody who says, why you have meetings during the day when everybody's at work? And I'm like, we're not in the kind of, we're, we have not been for a long time in the world where everybody works eight to five jobs. So we have people who work shift work, or they do, you know, two-on, one-off, or two-on, three-off, or whatever schedule. So, but I, generally, we try to do the calendar so that it, so that people who work for us can come, right? That's why we have that in the contract, where the principals don't schedule meetings. So that would inhibit during the school year, people who work for us to come. And we do have a lot of those, right, who come. I think, I, I think I, just right now, I would rather leave it as is and have those summer meetings, continue where the summer meetings, those first ones are in the morning. Yeah, that's all I have for now.
Ms. Trutt?
I think, Ms. Campbell, it made a lot of sense there. I mean, I, we have them, what, in June, in June at 9:30? I mean, the July 25th, that's back at 5:30, but that's the budget meeting. I, I didn't really think about inconveniencing the, the staff as much as that. It's almost taken a day out of their, their, their workday. But I, I'm all for, if it were the board's consensus or wishes, to, to move that second meeting to a 9:30. I think that would be allowing more participation, even if it doesn't happen, and we can say we've, we've allowed and, and been flexible on our, our meeting times. So again, I'm, I'm okay with leaving it, but if it was the board's wishes, I'd be for that as well.
So I, I kind of looked at it a little bit differently. I, I'm in favor of putting it half of them in the morning. And the reason is, is that participation, when you look at the people who come in and participate, we have probably about 80% of the people are the same people that just keep coming, right? And they also communicate to us via email and everything else. So I'm not worried about the participation piece, because we would be adding more people. You know what I mean? I feel that that would be offset the right way. Staff being home, I, to me, it means more for our staff to be able to have that evening at home, because, to be honest with you, all they do is work in the back the whole time we're there. So all it is, is that, that's it right now. So they're just typing on their computers, and this is just that they can't have staff meetings, but that's okay. If that takes away the fact that they have to be away from their families for two, three, four hours at night, I'm in favor of it. And then also, there's a lot of parents to the regard of what you were talking about that can't be here in the evening, who have children. And a lot of them can't come. So you have stay-at-home moms, you have all of these individuals who work during the day, or don't work during the day or work at night. Their children, because they have the kids, they're not able to come in and speak at night. So say a stay-at-home mom wants to come in at night, but she can't, because she's the one that takes care of the children at night, but she can find another stay-at-home mom during the day to, to put those children with, and they can come in and speak. So there are some positives towards the participation and including groups that are not currently in. So I'm in favor of it. I mean, I, I feel like if you would like to, we could move. The, the only issue would be that you would have to have that workshop after, right? If you moved it to nine, then you could have the workshop at 12, and we could be out of here by three, four o'clock and be done, so.
Or 10:30 is what it says.
Dr. Rendell, I guess maybe also your feedback on this. I, again, just thought, okay, I will throw it out there and see, I don't know, if we can appease, I, I guess the reality is you're never going to appease everyone, but I just thought that, hey, you're right, there are a group of people that cannot come because of work schedules, or like you said, they watch children and they can't, their children are at school, so they could come during the day, and that would open that up. And I mean, I hear what you're saying, Ms. Jenkins, about the staff, too. I'll, yeah, I, I guess, again, you're not going to appease everyone, but I just thought, hey, we try it, we go through this every year, we approve this calendar, if it doesn't work, or we don't like it, it's not going well, we can always look at changing it back, so.
Can I add one more factor before you go, Dr. Rendell? We, we have also, the other things that we do involve people coming from our schools' recognitions. We've been having our student groups come, that would be hard to do during the school day because of transportation and things. And, and our, and our administrative recommendations that come, that would be, it would be probably challenging to move those.
It would be more of a business meeting, I would say.
So my response, a couple, a couple of different things. First of all, I think staff are going to work, you know, whatever time they need to work. So it would, some of them would probably view it as a benefit if the business meeting was during the days, that way they, their night would be freed up to be with their family. The ones who aren't presenting kind of do work anyway, so I'm hoping they would be productive during that time. Trade-offs, positives and negatives. So some of the positives would be, we might see different people, you know, might participate that don't. When we have the meetings in the summer and during the daytime, we're one of the only businesses that's not open. You know, everybody else is still open. So if people are able to come to our daytime meetings in the summer, you would think that they'd be able to come to daytime meetings during the school year, because they must not, you know, they must be able to find a way to leave work, or maybe they work from home, or they're self-employed, or whatever. So I don't, and, you know, with that, we don't know till we try it, like, we've never done it, so I don't know what, how, you know, and the board can switch the calendar anytime they want, I believe, right, Mr. Gibbs? We can just have a meeting and say, we're going to go back to nighttime and change their calendar.
They can amend the calendar. My question is, is that piece about the teachers coming in the contract, which would require bargaining? So I don't know that answer.
I think the, with the language that I referred to last time, and the contract was that principals don't schedule open house on the second and third, second and fourth Tuesdays of the month to avoid having open house or requires, it's teacher required activities on a school board meeting day. So I don't, it's not in the contract that we have our meetings in a particular time, but that's for them to be able to participate.
Right, and we do have plenty of ways for people to get us information via email, phone call, text, or social media, or whatever. Student performances, we brought the student performances back, so on the one hand, it might be a hindrance, but, and again, you know, there might be some kids who don't get to participate if we do things in the evening, because they can't get here. So instead, you know, they would be on campus, we would just get a school bus to bring them here, or something like that. So, you know, it might not be an issue. I think, might save a few dollars on overtime for our security staff, because we would already have staff on during the day. So we have security for board meetings, we could eliminate that cost or reduce it. I don't want to say I'm ambivalent, I'm not ambivalent, I think it's kind of a neat idea. I, I wouldn't be opposed to trying it, especially because we haven't done it this way, you know, during the year. And it seems to function during the summer. So, you know, I don't, and if we start to, if we, if you do, if you do make the change and we start to hear from community members that they're not able to attend, and this isn't the right way to do it, the board can react to that.
Ms. Campbell, you basically almost had that verbatim, it's like you memorized it. So the contract line, it, it shouldn't be an issue. It says neither open houses nor parent-teacher conferences will be scheduled on the second or fourth Tuesday of any month to avoid regularly scheduled school board meetings. So it's just stopping those open houses and parent-teacher conferences.
Right. No, we're good.
So board, would you be in favor? Then I guess my, my ask is, if we looked at changing the calendar and making our second meeting of the month be a meeting that starts at 9:00 AM as opposed to our 5:30 meeting, would that be something that the board would approve?
So the, so the months that have two meetings?
Right, there's only seven meetings total for the entire year that this would really impact.
I, I, I'm not opposed to it. I don't have a feeling either way. What I was saying from the big echo was just, just to be a devil's advocate and to hear how that would affect staff.
Yeah.
I don't care either way.
I prefer it to be in the morning, because they can go home.
I don't know, I don't think they're going to. I, I feel the same way. So I'm not, I'm not opposed to it, just as long as, you know, we could be amenable if we start to have outrage from the community.
Right.
So do we keep it at the 9:30 as the other ones are?
Yeah, the two summers are 9:30.
9:30, okay.
Because, to be fair, there's plenty of, there's plenty of other districts that do their story in the daytime consistently. And so, but we do need to listen to the community if they're, if they're not okay with it.
And then the 7:00 a.m. workshop, is that what we're doing?
You didn't ask staff about that.
You're like, oh, plot to us.
If we did that.
They are.
But 9:30, I mean, you guys, there's times that are being thrown out. I had, I'm in favor of nine, but Ms. Campbell had mentioned that it was difficult to get kids possibly here during the day.
Yeah, I think 9:30 would be more appropriate. We needed to bus kids here to perform or participate.
Okay. All right. We're good on that, everybody?
Everybody's in favor?
Half of them.
I like.
Put it through, bring it back.
Do that.
Good. It's good to see when we started this now rather than the last time we did it when it had to happen that night.
Yeah, just remind us all, we have to vote on this at the November meeting. We can't move this because it's written in statute. We have to set dates and times at the November.
Okay.
We got it. All right. Everybody okay?
Yep.
All right. Moving on, the next topic is, the discussion is the legislative agenda. Just so everybody knows, we're at 3:18 as far as time goes, just to give everybody a heads up. Now legislative agenda platform, if we looked at it online, it was a little bit different than the draft that was put here on our tables, so.
That is, I'm sorry, that's the FSBA one that I had. So, sorry. You wrote all over it.
And I put here, I put specific to Brevard.
No, 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 I'm sorry.
Where are you guys coming at with this? Like, I was like, what in the world? Like, we need specific to Brevard. I was like, where's all our CTE stuff?
Come to us, Mr. Susan. So you had asked me a couple of times ago to bring out the FSBA agenda to see if there was anything that might affect.
All right.
So I asked Lena to make a copy and then I pulled them all out so you'd have it in front. You're stressing me out.
Good deal.
I was stressing you out, so it's all good. So just, this is something, so I put it out for two reasons. One, and you can get this back to me later. I need to know what the thoughts of everybody are on this, especially the three of us who are on FSBA, so I can, you know, get that feedback back to the advocacy committee meeting on Friday. But also, there was some language here that was similar to stuff that we had and I just wanted you guys to take a look at it if you hadn't already looked at it. I don't think we need to add any of these because we already have nine and it sounds like, from what Russ said, we need to cut something down. So anyway, this is just for you guys to see.
That's all. Okay. So we have a couple of them. And let me, before we get into it, let me just, from a perspective of conversation, we usually only come up with three, maybe four. So as we're going through these, I have a feeling that some of them are more requests to the Department of Education. Some of them are more fold into others. And then some of them, you know what I mean, we could, are more of a longer range. So I'll be quiet because I'm supposed to go last. But I did want to just kind of lay it out, that there's kind of a framework that just by the proper sense of looking at it from a perspective of how long does this normally take? What is it that we can do? I think we can, with those nine, get them down to about three. So I'll be quiet. There were some requests on there that we could go through. But I have a feeling, if, once we kind of walk through some of our feelings on these, I think that will come to a consensus. And I'm pulling it up here because my laptop is dead, so. Go ahead, though. No, I got it. I got it right here. Okay.
I agree. This is too many. And I think there were some things that we'd really like. But one of the things that when we were going through the FSBA platform development was there were some things that our lobbyists were in the room and we don't have that benefit of having them in the room, just saying, that's dead on arrival.
Right.
You know, there's, there's no point in sending stuff up that is not going to make traction. I, I have, just for me, just kind of went through, just quickly prioritized some of them. I think number one and two are very important. I think number one is definitely doable. I think they've been trying to work at the retirement. They already made a move last year by allowing retirees to come back and volunteer and that was new. I think we're moving there. Obviously, the allocation for our adult ed CDL training, that needs to be, that's our only appropriation we're asking for. That's got to be on there, to me. And then that number, I know pre-K is your baby, but I've had some conversations with other districts as to why that may not fly and that's because they don't use certified teachers for their VPKs. But that number four, to me, is the next, the, the next. So to me, one, two, and four are my priorities. And then I would say five and six would be the other ones. If we want, I don't think we have to get it all the way down to three.
Here's what it is. So what I asked was if we could just kind of talk through like where your important ones are and everything else. And then we'll come back to it and maybe identify a couple. Speaking to that pre-K, there's a lot of combos. There's a lot of districts that don't actually have the pre-K. The problem is, is that our pre-K teachers are not given the same rights as the normal teachers. But they're certified and in many cases inside of our school district, they're required to be certified. So it's like this, there's like 20 things and there's some good statistics about it. But my argument was, is that the pre-K teachers, what we're asking for is an OPAGA report to kind of identify. Because when I was in Tallahassee four years ago, we were trying to drive this thing and there were so many nuances that came with it, that it became this huge ball. And they said, can we get an OPAGA report? And everybody said, yeah, we'll do the OPAGA report. I said, okay, we're good. That's what's going to happen. And then literally, it didn't happen. Then we went into COVID and now we're here.
Right.
So what I would ask is, is instead of making it a legislative platform, let's get ahold of DOE and the appropriate people and drive it through to have the OPAGA report. But you don't need the legislature to come together to make an OPAGA report. The DOE and leadership can make that decision. So if it's okay with you guys, I would like to advocate for it, but I think it's placed in the wrong position. And I can advocate for it on the side. I've already got the pre-K teachers around the state all riled up and we're getting ready to go. So I think we're in a good spot, if that's okay with you guys. Good?
Yeah, I'm completely fine with it. What does OPAGA stand for? What's the acronym stand for?
Office of Policy, it's like basically the place that goes.
The research study.
Yes. Like, they do all the research studies on the impacts and everything else. So like, if you read on one of the other items that we have tonight, there was an OPAGA report that came into it. Actually.
I just always ask about the acronyms because Brevard County speaks fluent acronym and I don't always know what they are. And so I like to always ask everyone, what does that stand for? And what I find more times than not is, not everyone else knows what they are either, they just say them, so.
Office of something, something, and something.
Okay.
So meaning, here's what the proper process is there. Have the pre-K, have the OPAGA report requested by our legislator. They don't make a formal bill to do this.
Okay.
Just say, hey, guys, we need you to go to what you said you would do four years ago. I'll take that on and I'll go do that outside. You know what I mean? If that's good, we're good there.
No, I love it.
All right. Okay, so Ms. Campbell put number one and number two and number four and gave good, good representation. Is there anybody else that wants to tell me who their favorites are and maybe we can get this thing knocked out?
So I advocated for the conversation about the 25%, but I think, I don't think we should remove it because it's so simple and it can be literally said in one simple sentence. I don't love the way it's written here because I feel like it's overcomplicated. And I really think it's important to use verbiage that explicitly states, it restricts school districts from addressing wage compression within their own discretionary funds and their own budget. Like, I think that's what needs to be focused on when we're talking about that, that piece there. And again, I don't think we should remove it because it's literally a sentence. I think we can make that still stick. I have a question, like, where?
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah, sorry.
Would you consider that part of like deregulation?
No.
Considering that the fact that we are deregulating that to not exist?
No, because, I mean, it's, honestly, the way I look at it is, I don't think our legislators, and this is no offense to them, like, this is so in the weeds. I don't even think that they even understand that that still exists and how, and how it handcuffs us when it comes to that situation. Like, I don't, I don't think they understand the impacts of it. So I think if it was expressed to them, this stops us from addressing wage compression ever since we brought up our starting teacher salary. I think it would be like, oh, okay. Because they removed it from the teacher salary increase allocation. My assumption here is because they realized that it was a struggle and it was impacting. I don't think that they realized that it was still lingering on in this, in this statute. But again, I think if it can be crafted into a simple sentence, into plain language, it could be effective. I'm curious, so I don't remember us talking about, and I agree with the ones you highlighted, Ms. Campbell, I'm not going to repeat them. But the, I don't, when did we get to number, like, where did number nine come from? I don't remember us talking about that.
I think that one must have come from staff.
Right. So I kind of want to.
It came from staff.
I want to know why. It's obviously important.
Just recently, the state awarded, you know, has set aside $5 million to assist schools with implementing the new start, you know, meeting the new start time regulations. And we had a chunk of that set aside, so to speak, we could access if we needed to, to do things differently to meet the new start times. Well, we already meet the new start time requirements, so we're not eligible for that money. So it's just kind of like, you know, you set aside all this money for all the districts and the districts who've already done this don't get any of that money. It was just kind of like, you know.
We should get it for a prize for not making our.
Yeah, we're not, because you have to write like what you're going to do to implement, how you need to, you know, we don't, we already do it.
And is this every year?
This happens every once in a while. It doesn't happen every year.
Okay.
I actually would, if we're going to pare these down, that was the first one I was going to take off.
Okay.
Even though it was the one I put on.
I just wanted to know if it was super, super important.
Yeah, no, because it didn't really amount to a lot of money. It's just the premise that you're going to give out money to have something happen. We're already doing that, kind of thing, you know? It's like, because we did it right earlier, we don't get any of the money. But, you know, I don't.
So I really deep dove that because I didn't know what it was and I wanted to be a part of it. It's $5 million towards school districts who are not in that scope because it's become law that in, I think, 2026, if you read the bill, 2027, every school district has to move to make this happen.
Right. Can't start school before.
They allocated the $5 million to, I think it said, to, to school board, like, it was a combination of people that were supposed to come together to identify all of the issues that they needed and then utilize it. And this was supposed to offset the costs of having those evaluations and all that stuff. So if you're willing to pull it, I, after I was reading it and I looked at the fact that they're going to OPAGA with stuff, I mean, it was crazy.
It was just.
Okay.
Yeah. And they actually may adjust that. When that bill came out and passed, what I heard was, that's probably not going to happen exactly as it was written because that's why they put it so far out. So districts had some time and they may change the legislation, so I think it's probably good.
Well, and not for nothing, but the core premise behind moving the dates to having later opening spots is based upon a 2010, partly, most part, a large part of it, is a 2010 study that the American Pediatrics Association has utilized, saying basically, these are the factors that have driven the kids to not be able to get the sleep they need. So it's not some sort of bizarre thing that the kids actually have this serotonin and all this stuff. That is a part of it. But the driving force behind it, according to that, because I pulled the research and did it, was the fact that there's cell phone use, kids are working and all these other things. And it was focused mainly on the high school. So my thing was, is in 2010, if it was that they were using their cell phones too much, in 2023, it's got to be a whole lot worse, right? So there's some validity behind it. But when you sit down and look at the reasoning behind the reason of us moving to it, it's almost like we're catering to the individuals to do that. So I just kind of was like, you know what? I don't even want to be near this thing and start getting, going, hard competition mad. So I think that.
So we're down to seven?
Well, so, hold on. Because I'm not finished here. So I, I personally think we can, how many minutes do you get? Three, five, or seven? I don't remember. Five?
I think it's five.
Five. So I, I personally think we can do four or five if they're condensed. I think it's appropriate for us to use all that time adequately. I agree with you, Ms. Campbell. I think one, two, and four are probably the top three. I actually think that the pre-K should stay on there. Totally shrink that and condense that, though. Again, like, clean it up and make it simple and plain for them. And then, to me, I would put the 25% in a sentence before it. Talk about the pre-K and then talk about at the end, hey, or you can consider OPAGA study. We can talk about that another time or something and throw that out at the end. Just so that it's on the forefront of their mind. Because there's some things on here that could be fixed quicker than other things when it comes to pre-K teachers and I think it's important to bring up.
I.
Like Teacher Authority Act, Drop Retirement, you know what I mean? There's pieces of that that can be tackled that don't have to be tackled as a whole and I think it's important to bring up.
So when we looked at, and I didn't do a very good job of explaining it, I think, but when we were, when we looked at it prior, there were literally, from retirement to certification, to like five different silos that then were under five different certifications that were then. So when we brought it to the legislature and said, you guys have to change this, they said, there's no way we'll touch that with a hot, that's a hot, you know what I mean, hot potato. So we asked, what's the next process? And they said the best thing was the OPAGA. And I'll be honest with you, like, this is going to become one of my biggest pushes is to get this thing across the finish line because I've just been dealing it with for it for so long. So I wanted to say that, Ms. Jenkins, you're 100% right, letting them know this is very important to us. But I think the path to getting it done is that first OPAGA report that says and then passing legislation based on it. Because we were afraid that we were going to miss something and then have to come back anyway. So I just wanted to kind of clarify.
Yeah, I hear you. And I, what I'm trying to say is, I agree with you and I think it's an appropriate space to say it. If you, you know, you don't have to, this whole giant section doesn't have to be read aloud, right? But I think it's important for it to be brought up.
Even if you just say what you said to us is that you're, you're going to pursue us another route, but just. But if we take.
And then quickly, just, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. But like, just taking some of those simple bullet points there and saying it, because on its face, just hearing that is like, oh, that doesn't make any sense. And then it kind of just makes them think, all right, this has some juice behind it.
But he can, we're going to, you're going to give them a copy of all this, even if you don't read all of it, right? Whichever we decide.
Well, Brenna and I will work on it with Rendell.
Yeah.
I know you said this, Ms. Wright, you really wanted to do this, but I am going to say that number eight, I think, is dead on arrival.
That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine. I mean, if I were going to pick mine, mine would be the first page, one, two, three, and four. Those are the ones I would focus on, so.
I will tell you number six, because we talked about, it doesn't say cost per student station, but number six is part of the, a big part of the dereg.
Yeah, that's what it is.
That was on here with, so I think we're, we're going to get there another route.
And I, and my thing is, is that like, when we talk about the deregulation and stuff like that, that is going to happen anyway, so there's no sense in even bringing, like, that fight inside, that cap, the charter schools is, is something that I'm going to address. But anyways, okay. So I have Ms. Jenkins and Ms. Campbell, if I may review real quick, one, two, and four for both of you. Ms. Jenkins was concerned about seven. Is that correct, Ms. Jenkins?
Yeah, I think, I think seven can be said in a sentence, so I don't think we should leave it out.
Okay. And then.
And I agree with you talking about three. I think it's important.
Okay. And then Ms. Wright had said that one, two, three, and four were the tops. What about you?
Yeah, so one, two, three, four, and seven, I think, can be talked about quickly.
Okay.
I agree.
Yeah. And if you have 10 seconds left, say, OPAGA, or run away.
So one, two, three, four, and seven.
Yeah.
Seven is going to be addressed, I think, by FADS and stuff like that, those wage compressions. Do they ever touch that stuff?
I, I agree with Mrs. Jenkins. I think number seven needs to be stated kind of on its own.
Okay.
Because that's a specific thing that needs to.
That's our problem.
That really binds our hands in all districts. So, I mean, I had one, two, four, and seven, so I'm close.
All right. Got it. So we'll work with them on those items and then tomorrow's going to be fun.
Can I ask this, the answer, well, okay, I think I know the answer. So the public can come and say stuff, right?
Yep.
Do they still allow them to show up to the meeting and fill out a card? And it, or do they have to pre-register?
I don't know. People are already saying, I'm speaking tomorrow, so I don't know if there's some registration.
Do you still have a list when you walk in?
Yeah.
And sometimes they've allowed if they have time at the end for people to go.
I'm just curious because I had spoken to some of those pre-K teachers.
Is that correct?
And I would love to just follow up and say like, hey, we may not get to it. And I know you've spoken to them too, Mr. Susan. But like, hey, maybe you guys can go to, you know, and do, and advocate.
Yeah. I asked the pre-K teachers to come.
You had to pre-register? Okay, then never mind.
But.
Just in case they asked to, though, I don't want to tell them the wrong thing.
But I asked them to come so that they could be behind. So when we bring it, yeah, when we bring it up, they'll be there to support. And that's, that's the idea, so.
So we are voting on this tonight, so do we have a consensus then of what we're going to?
One, two, three, four, seven.
Because then they can edit it before we, okay.
One, two, three, four, seven, and various degrees of how we're going to do it, but those are our thoughts.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. The next topic is Board Policy 2120, School Improvement.
So with this one, we made the NEOLA recommendations. Some things just to highlight as major differences from the previous policy from the previous policy is the inclusion of the early warning indicators. Something I can tell you is, yes, it may be new to this red line version, but we have been using the state template for years, so that is not new to our practice.
Got it. Anybody else wish to speak to this item?
That is what I was gonna say. I think we're already doing it.
All right. Next, next topic is 2131, Educational Goals.
Again, that goes with the Neola version. We selected item six based on the notes from when you, the board members reviewed the 2000s. So there is nothing out of the norm, this just overviews what we expect and set as goals for our students when they leave our system.
Anybody wish to speak to this?
I do, I have stuff written on this one.
Well, we'll get that pad there, we gotta, let's go. Okay.
All right, sorry, I just gotta find where I have that. Because for some reason this looks a little bit different. All right, page nine, section two, letter C. I wrote that I don't like, so. Oh, understands and responds appropriately to the communication of others. I, I feel like that should, that sentence should end there. And to their feelings and attitudes, I think, is a little subjective and that's my personal opinion. I don't know where the board's at on this one, so when we're talking about communication skills that we want the student to be able to demonstrate. So I think just they're able to understand and respond appropriately to the communication of others. Anybody have any feelings one way or the other on that? Yeah.
You can fold one into the other.
Well, it's on page nine, it's letters.
Little letter C.
Little letter C, you gotta scroll down towards the bottom of the page. So these are the, we want our students to leave our schools with these skills.
I don't have a problem with it either way, but I mean, they're responding to the feelings of others, responding to the attitudes of others appropriately.
Do you feel adamant about it? I support it.
I just feel like, yeah, their feelings and attitudes is, I, sometimes the appropriate response is not necessarily the right response to somebody's feelings or attitude. We see that quite a bit here, so I just, for them to understand what it is, you know.
So from, from a speech language pathologist perspective, it's saying that you understand how to respond to the feelings of others. It doesn't mean that the other person's feelings are, or their attitude is appropriate. And it's called pragmatics and it is very often a goal of many of our students in elementary school in order to be able to adapt to their communication partner adequately. I think, I think it's really important.
I do have a child who had, this was part of his speech therapy that he got with, he didn't have a problem with the production of it, but the, thank you for saying that word because I always never remember that, the pragmatics of, part of his, you know, work was to be put in situations where he had to practice how to respond, how to read other people's, because there are certain disabilities where the disability is, I can't, you know, I can't understand someone else's motives and so that was a lot of the work that he did. So I don't think it's problematic the way that it's worded. I don't think we're asking people to do things, students to do things that are beyond what they should be doing. Because they do, if someone comes at you with a bad attitude, you need to respond appropriately. You know, if they come, someone comes at you with strong feelings, you need to understand how to respond appropriately. And that's not necessarily equal, you know, you don't, if they come at you, doesn't, you don't necessarily come at them with this, with equal and opposite response. How do you respond appropriately, even when the other people's feelings or attitudes are inappropriate?
That's not the right answer. Okay, and if you guys want to leave it, leave it, I just, I thought the sentence could end at, responds appropriately to the communication of others.
You want to leave it in there, Jean?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think the way it was explained, because it isn't the speaker's feelings and attitudes, it's the, it's the communication partner as it was described. I think that changes maybe what, that's right, I don't put it out there.
Says understands and responds appropriately to the communication of others.
So, yeah, I'm fine with.
And to their feelings and attitudes.
All right, you start two.
That's perfect.
Then move on.
Love you. The next one I had, I, again, and this is, you know, maybe, again, I feel like some of these things are a little, they're subjective. Page 10, section four, letter B, societal standards, I don't know that that's necessarily the right phrase to use. Hang on. Displays responsible, no, where am I at in this one? Why is this different now? Sorry, give me.
Four B.
Okay.
I think that a lot of the problems we have are because people are not having behavior consistent with societal standards.
Well, I think societal standards is subjective to changing all the time and so what societal standards are today may not be what they are tomorrow. So maybe upstanding citizenship would be a better word. But again, it's a personal.
Which is also subjective.
Yeah, I guess both, both of them are, you're right. So societal standards, changing and evolving all the time. So that was the only, I didn't care for it so much, but again, not, if that's what the board wishes to keep, then we'll keep it there.
Could we strike that part so that it would just say displays responsible ethical and moral behavior? And then reflecting a commitment to his or her capabilities to achieve and maintain a purposeful, productive life? And just strike consistent with societal standards and.
I mean, I would argue that responsible ethical and moral behavior is a societal standard, so it doesn't make sense to double state it.
Okay. So based off of striking consistent through and, is that?
Consistent, yeah, we're striking the words consistent.
So it goes straight from behavior to and.
Your society is determining those things anyway.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm just reading my notes. Oh, on page 10, under the Arts and Culture section, I think Neola's template was better. Ours is much different than what Neola's was. So we're on page 10 again and let me go back to what Neola's was versus what ours. I liked Neola's version personally better than what's there. Student, so Neola's version is, student demonstrates that he or she appreciates and supports artistic endeavors and natural beauty is cultivating his or her own creative self-expression and talents in one or more art forms, which.
Oh, that almost looks like it's not the right one.
I know, well, that's what I, when I read it, I was like, ah.
Yeah, that talks about functioning, I'm thinking maybe that is not in the right place.
Okay.
I agree as an arts teacher that student demonstrates, so the Neola says appreciates and supports artistic endeavors and natural beauty.
Yeah, it's supposed to be societal change or social change.
Oh, yeah, you're right, that was a social change one, it was G, from Neola. Is cultivating his or her own creative self-expression talents in one or more art forms.
Current social conditions and events, yeah. It seems very out of place, so on the Arts and Culture red line version, make sure that we implement Neola's versus the one that we have there.
Yes.
So I think we, I think they accidentally got scaled.
Or didn't include the social change.
It's really hurting me about this.
Were you all okay with what you're saying?
And that's all I have on that one, so.
Let's get staff to.
Right, like they just merged in by accident. Okay.
So would you?
Ms. Harris, do you feel like you got what they're trying to say?
I do.
Was that all for that?
That's all that I had written down for the policy.
Anybody else? Oh, there's a walnut, it's awesome. There's some pecans in there. All right, the next topic is, where are we on, Educational Goals, right? No, we're on 2210, School Improvement.
So 2210 is curriculum development and the, in looking at the Neola, the addition for this one, it is the addition of language around our K-12 reading plan. So you know that comes before the board every year. And it just speaks to that that will come for board approval, but we also send it to the Just Read Florida office and include language around how we're supporting students with substantial deficiencies.
Okay, and the only question I had on this one was that the Neola template, and I see it's not in ours, but it, it references an innovative programs policy and that's not something we currently have. And so I didn't know, do we need to look at possibly implementing that within our district?
I think it would be something to definitely explore.
Okay, all right, and if it's your.
It has it in E, we have it in E.
It has.
Sorry, what?
Right after the Just Read Florida, it says E innovative programs and it just kind of turns into a heading for the language that was already in the policy.
So, right, but the Neola, yeah, where the Neola template, yeah, C policy, 2250, innovative programs. And I'm like, okay, well, when I go and look at, it's kind of like it's talking about seeing this policy, which is the one we're talking about. So usually what I'm saying is kind of circling back and I'm like, do we need a separate policy?
We don't have a reference to 2250 because we don't have a 2250.
Right, we don't have one, but then like, we don't have an innovative programs policy and I guess this is kind of implementing it in there, right?
What I would want to do is look at what is the Neola recommendation for that innovative policy to see if that would be something that we would bring forward to discuss.
Okay.
Anybody else on anything on 2210, School Improvement? Hearing none, moving on, the next topic is Board Policy 2216, Gifted Education.
For this one, you'll see the changes that we made was more to streamline. We had in our policy before, it spoke to elementary gifted, middle school gifted. And basically it's very streamlined and so we took that out because what we're saying is for our public schools gifted, that this would be our expectations in that language. So it was kind of some just technical corrections.
Yes, no, thank you, I, I appreciate the condensed version because I was like going back between all three, looking at them going, wait a minute, we have elementary, middle school, high school, might be say the exact same thing, there's nothing different at all. So I wasn't sure why we created them into three different versions, but yeah, looks good.
All right. Any other discussion on gifted? Hearing none, the next topic is Board Policy 2260, Non-Discrimination and Access to Equal Educational Opportunity.
That policy aligns to House Bill 7, which was brought forward by legislation. So to align that, there were certain trainings and certain instruction that are prohibited. And so that outlined that and Neola gave us that language. So we are reflecting that change Neola recommended.
Any discussion on this item?
Yeah, just briefly, and I don't know why we didn't catch it the last time we revised this policy because we've done, this is not new, but in our very first paragraph, general statement, it refers to antisemitism, it says as defined in by law 0100. We don't actually have that, that's our definitions by law, we don't have antisemitism included in our 100 definitions policy. So we either need to do one of two things, we either need to just strike that part or we need to add antisemitism to our definition policy.
We didn't add that last?
0100 was not, I went back and looked, it wasn't one of the ones that we did any updates on. So, but I'm pretty sure there's a statutory definition for antisemitism, so probably what we need to do is leave it in, but let's also adapt 0100, I don't know.
I think it would be better to just say as defined by and then reference the statute number.
Yeah.
That works too.
Okay. Paul.
Good, Ms. Danby.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? Good job. All right, next topic is Board Policy 2260.01, Changing Policy Number Two, 2260.02, Anti-Harassment and Non-Discrimination Appeals Process.
This is basically a policy number change from 2260.01 to 2260.02. When we referenced back to this, that was discussed, I guess it was too close to a previous policy that we had, so we were asked to specifically change the policy number for this.
Oh, I think Neola had a different policy.
Yes.
Everybody okay with it? All right, moving on, the next topic is Board Policy 2410, School Health Services. Any board member wish to speak to it?
No, when I was first going through to this one first and I thought, why are you cutting all the stuff out about the mental health? But actually, because we're creating the new policy and moving it over, that makes so much more sense to put it in a separate.
Put your lines to the next policy.
Yes, so, yes.
I, I just want to highlight that I think it's very, very good that the board's taking the initiative to have the availability of menstrual hygiene products available to our students. Some of our kids, this is one of the things I've been hearing from a lot of my middle school and high school staff is that they don't have, they don't have these products. So we're trying to rally them up in the community and find the hygiene products that these kids need, especially when we're talking about our homeless population. So I'm like, this is a huge, huge jump in helping them in an area that you wouldn't think about unless you had the issue going on, you know? Good job.
All right, we're good? Anybody else wish to speak to the policy? All right, next topic is Board Policy 2410.01, Mental Health Services. Does anybody wish to speak to this?
This was the new policy that we're incorporating in the language. And this one specifically has some content related to mental health services. So this is a new policy that we created.
Come.
Based on Neola's recommendation.
I had some questions about that, just only because it seems like the state's moving more towards a resiliency plan versus mental health. And so I'm, I was just questioning, hey, should our policy align with really what the state is doing there versus mental health? Because there's some stuff in here that makes me a little bit nervous, if I'm being honest, on what we're asking our staff to do or possibly identifying, I know they're going to refer them out for services and there's timelines and things that have to be done. So I just wasn't clear on if we should be moving the direction the state's moving.
Well, I know we have these timelines that is in statute, the 30-day, 15-days with referring and services and following up on that. So that is in statute. As far as the resiliency curriculum, that has been changed more to more of a life skills, but we still have a focus on our mental health for students. It's not being taught per se in the classroom like it previously, it was focused, we had to have the five hours. Now it's more the resiliency, but we still have to focus on meeting the timeline of the statute.
Okay.
Of referring for services, et cetera.
And I think this is more along the lines of students in crisis, students that we refer out. You know, the, what we had in this part that got pulled out of 2410 and put into this was, what do we do if the Baker Act? It doesn't say Baker Act in here, but this is the part, this section in here is the part that has to do with Baker Acts. And we have a very specific order of things that have to be done and who does them to make sure that we don't do that wrong.
And by statute, we're supposed to be monitoring, making sure that we met the deadline. So we're making sure that we're in compliance with that.
And some of this, you know, some of the mental health funding allocations that have been given ever since 2018, they are specifically tied to things that we will provide for students.
Okay.
All right. Anything else?
Nope, everybody good on Mental Health Services? Next up is the next topic is Board Policy 5114, Foreign Students. Anybody wish to speak to that?
So this one has a lot of language that was pulled from Neola to speak specifically, if you'll see a lot of additions with J1 and F1 visas.
Yeah.
So I am open to your feedback on it there. Some of this is aligned to federal guidelines around these visas.
So this, so the revisions to me, you know, the Neola's options were either we're going to say we'll take F1 visas or we're going to say we won't. So we're saying here we will, which we already do at one school, we talked about expanding it, but that as far as the policy goes, I think this is as good as it is because we're saying that we will take both kinds of non-immigrant students.
There was discussion before in regards to the tuition fee that, that we're collecting. And it looks like it's still in here that we're, well, foreign students.
You're correct, so under F1, it speaks to participants in this program will be consistent with federal law that require the following. And then number three under there is the student pays the board the full amount of tuition prior to the commencement of the academic term of attendance.
So that's all laid out specifically, right, in federal law of how the program should go.
Okay.
But we don't charge for the J1s.
Correct.
And what do our, do you know what any of our surrounding districts are doing, if that's typical or?
I will have to do something.
Yeah, I'd have to check.
Okay, I'm just curious, kind of, on if we're, if we're different than what they are doing as far as these types of students? Because I, I'm, this is not a huge population of students that we're seeing on an annual basis.
Not for us, I think, but other districts probably have more experience with this and so.
Okay.
We can check, but I mean, we're just lining up with, with statute and federal law.
Okay.
So if we want to open opportunities up, we don't have to do that by changing policy, but we have this policy, we can add.
This would allow us to do that, to offer more opportunities, yeah.
All good? I did, I made some assumptions that weren't true there and I was like, I don't know, completely wrong on this one, so we're okay. Next up is, next topic is Board Policy 5410, Student Progression. Any board member wish to, or, I'm sorry, Ms. Harris.
The revision to this basically speaks to the language now that we're using the progress monitoring system instead of end-of-year statewide assessments.
Awesome, any board member wish to speak to this topic? Hearing none, we're going to move on, the next topic is Board Policy 5420, Reporting Student Progress. Ms. Harris, sorry, you're moving quick through that booklet.
That's good. This one speaks to some of current practices in BAVR and this speaks to the communication and the tools regarding progress monitoring plans that we prepare for students that are demonstrating any kind of deficiencies. It does also add in some of the new statutory language that requires that. So some of that we were doing as BAVR practice, but now there are certain requirements as far as plans that are written for students, but really aligning that to our student progression plan and providing that link in here. But you will see, you know, it speaks to report cards, but more, the bulk of the language under number five speaks to how will we create plans for students in parent-friendly language with supports for those students.
Okay, any board member wish to speak to this item?
Just a formatting issue, but Roman numeral 10 says report cards and just report cards. And I think that 11 through 15 are supposed to be under 10, so if we can re-letter that. Because just looking through, I think, yeah, Roman number 11 through 15 seemed like they go under report cards. It was supposed to be a new heading and those were supposed to be subheadings, so if we can fix that, that'd be good.
Is that all you have on?
That's all I have. Anything else, it's great.
Anybody else?
And thank you for putting all the links into the student progression plan.
Yes, yeah.
We like hot links.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Next up, next topic is Board Policy 5421, Grading. What do we have here, Ms. Harris?
This one, the only true revision, if you're looking at specifics, is the addition of that student progression plan. We're just trying to have that into everywhere that it can be referenced.
Okay, everybody good with that? All right, seeing that approval, moving on, the next topic is Board Policy 5421.01, Grade Forgiveness. Ms. Harris?
Same thing. Just adding the link.
All right, anybody else have anything to speak to this?
Oh, this is a brand new one.
No, this is a new one, though.
It's a new one, but it wasn't new to our practice, so it's just putting it in writing.
Okay.
All right, the next topic is Board Policy 5430, Class Rank. Anybody wish to speak to this? Okay, Ms. Harris, you want to give us a little overview and then we'll jump to the next one?
So this one, it's again adding the addition of the link.
Okay, anybody else have anything?
No, my Agenda Plus is not working right for the moment.
Next up is the next board, topic is Board Policy 5451, Student Recognition, Ms. Harris.
So in this one, it was just basically a review of this. I was not in my position when this, when you did the reviews of the 2000s, so I was looking at the notes and I know one of the big pieces is you wanted to allow principals the opportunity to make those school-based decisions. So just highlighting number two, the board authorizes the principal to develop that plan, in speaking. I just want to make sure that worked for the board.
Yep.
Everybody good with that? All right. Next Board Policy 5460.01, Graduation Requirements for Transfer Students. Ms. Harris.
I have a system, but now I'm going slow.
Pretty sure this one is just the link.
Just the addition of the link of the student progression plan.
Anybody else wish to speak to that? Hearing none, the next Board Policy is 5463, Credits from Other Schools. Ms. Harris.
This one again is just the addition of the student progression plan link.
Everybody okay with that?
All this work we're making.
Okay. Moving, moving forward, the next topic is Board Policy 5464, Accelerated Graduation Options. Ms. Harris.
Okay, for this one, so we do have the student progression plan link, but we also have just the language stating that a student that meets all requirements of the accelerated graduation option, just to align with the Florida statute.
Okay, anybody wish to speak to this item? Hearing none, the last topic is Board Policy 6320, Procurement and Contracting. Does anybody?
She's like, I'm out of the hot seat.
Ms. Chrissy, you been waiting there the whole time?
No, she just came.
She's probably watching on TV, she knew.
Yeah, it's my time.
So this has just very minor revisions that we're suggesting. One of them is, you know, based on board comments at the last review, one of them is adding the veterans preference and then the other. And then the other major revision is that all renewals will come back to the board.
Love that.
Yep, so both things that were mentioned by the board and now in policy.
Beautiful. It's a big one for us.